Good evening, welcome to the Smyrna Town Council meeting for the 11th December. Tonight we have-
Citizens comments on our agenda, and so if Mr. David Swanson is in the audience, we would ask Mr. Swanson to come up to the platform here. You'll have three minutes, and Ms. Diane will kind of let you know if you're going over.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm David Swanson. Address is 5601 Glen Alden Drive, Smyrna, Tennessee, of course, 37167. The last time I spoke with you all was back in March about the speeders, so I want to commend you guys for increased patrol. I think the chief was over, and increased patrol. There are still issues with speeding, of course. But my trepidation this time is that when the community was built, there, I think, I was the first house in phase four. I think we're in phase seven now. The lighting is horrible. We have, of course, during this time of the season, everyone is in, every neighborhood is experiencing car thefts, car burglaries, and stuff like that. Here just recently, last week, we had four, three teenagers that were trying to carjack, I mean, steal cars and stuff like that. But what they do is they go into areas where it's not lit at, and they get out their cars, which is, you know, if they're in an area that's not lit, they can get out, no one knows what they're doing. I'm fortunate enough to have five cameras on the outside of my home, so I can detect when someone is coming around my home or my neighbors' homes. So I have streets that are listed where there's only either one light or two lights. This was as the community was developed, which is Stonefield Montgomery Way, Maple Creek Montgomery Way, Lee Road Montgomery Way, and Napa Valley, as well as Maple Creek and Montgomery Way as well, where there's poor lighting in the community. People, ladies walk their dogs out, children walk their dogs out, but if something was to happen and we have no lighting, of course, that would be decreased security. So is that a developer thing, or was that with the city that's due to the lack of lighting on that, was my first issue? And secondly, been here two years, I've noticed the staggering of the council terms. Is there an educational point on your website, which I have, or online, that gives a direction of which the town council runs? Like, I know we have someone running in 2019, someone may run in 2021. I come from, of course, Birmingham, Alabama, where the mayor may run, starting January, Mayor Reed just recently ran. So in two years from that, the entire council runs, and their seats are up. But in, I'm noticing here, a lot of people, there's a lack of voting because no one knows when the town council is running. So what is the term, or what is the, what is the, I guess, the rule on that, or how, you know, so that the public can be, the public can be known, so we can know what to do, you know, as far as when they, when everybody runs, when everybody don't run? So those are my two concerns.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Glen Allen. We do appreciate your comments, and thank you for the compliment of the enforcement that's been taking place since your last visit.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
We appreciate it as well.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, so we'll move on to call the meeting to order. Our first order of business tonight is prayer, so we'll ask everybody to stand. And I believe that Chaplain Hunter will be doing our prayer, and then Kevin Riggs will be doing our pledge for us.
Would you bow with me, please? Heavenly Father, we've come before your throne tonight thanking you for the many blessings that you have showered down upon us. I thank you for these men and women who are serving as council members, for our mayor, for all employees. We have about 400 employees in Smyrna, and Father, each one is needed, and each job is appreciated in so very fine way. I thank you, Father, for loving us and caring for us. I thank you for this time of year. It's an exciting time of year for a lot of us, but we recognize that for others, it's a difficult time of year. For those that may be less fortunate, I pray, I pray you'll be with those who may be ill, those that may be struggling financially, those that have various issues in life. Please be with them and strengthen them and help them in their, whatever need it might be that they have. As we go forward, Father, we thank you for the greatest gift that we could ever receive, and Jesus, thank you for sending him that we might have the hope of everlasting life. Father, I pray this prayer in Christ's name, and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain. Kevin, we will move on to our roll call. Diane, will you do roll call for us, please?
Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell.
Here.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Then Mayor Reed.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to our minutes. Approval or correction of the minutes from the November 13 and November 29, 2018 meetings. Counselor, have you looked these over?
No.
Everything looks good? All right. Take a motion on the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes.
You have a minute? Have we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Steve. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Correspondents, communications. Who's got that tonight? Mr. Hercules, anybody? Do we have anything?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Awards and recognitions. I know we have some tonight, because the audience is pretty full, with some parade winners. So we're going to try to recognize those. I'm going to ask Jill Strange to come up and start this process for us. Jill has been a wonderful asset to the town of Smyrna when it comes to getting this parade organized. If you don't know Jill, if you've been a participant in the parade, I'm sure you've heard from her. She's done an outstanding job. We really, really do appreciate her a lot. And we appreciate your husband, too, but thank you for doing the job for organizing the parade.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity. I love it so much, more than I could possibly ever put into words to you guys. I enjoy working in Smyrna and enjoy working with the community and with you guys, but it's just the best opportunity, and there's so many facets to it that just have so many feel-good moments. So thank you, thank you so much for the opportunity to get to do it.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. Well, we had our 2018 parade, and it was the biggest yet. We had 127 applicants apply to get into the parade, and only nine had opportunities to where something else came up, or there was illness, or something like that. So we had a really plentiful day. It was a beautiful day. We were bookended by some of the worst weather in Tennessee so far, but our day happened to be just a beautiful day. So we got so lucky, and we were just super thankful for that. But we want to start out with our parade winners. We always run a really friendly competition between our floats, and we want to win a little Christmas money, so we throw that out there. And we had some really notable floats this year, and then we had four grand prize winners. Our notable floats this year, we had Martin Heating, Cooling, and Plumbing. They did an air duct Christmas, and it was just the coolest thing, super creative. We had Smyrna Ready Mix with the Polar Express train that was enormous Christmas spirit. We had the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department, who put the Grinch in custody. And you guys can see on the screen, they're following along, so you can see a couple of those floats up there, and they're just really neat.
H.G., is that you?
He wanted to so bad. We had Anti-Assault Addicts come in, and this was a new group in Smyrna. They had about a dozen ATVs come in to show Smyrna that there's a really neat off-road, off-roads group here in Smyrna, that they can join that club and get some off-roading done. So that was pretty neat that they came out. And Cub Scout Pack 1001 did the Island of Misfit Toys, and that was just super enjoyable to look at, and all those kids are just always a joy to spend time with. But our four grand prize winners, we ran a category called Most Creative, and our most creative entry was number 86, and the winner was Smyrna Fast Pitch. They did Nightmare Before Christmas. So you can see their float, and what we'd like to do as we go through these with Smyrna Fast Pitch, we'd like for you guys to come up, receive your certificate and your money, your prize money, and have a picture with the Vice Mayor, the Council, and Town Manager. So do you guys want to go through all of the award winners and then do pictures?
We'll leave that up to you, however you want to do it.
Come on up, Smyrna Fast Pitch. So that was so good. This is for you, and if you guys will take this right up front with Mr. Mark and Mr. Hercules, we'll get a picture of you guys. We're so glad you're here, and you did such a fantastic job, but they were a $100 winner of Most Creative.
Is she a pitcher?
She's trying to be.
No. Go right ahead. I like being on this side of the camera.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it very much.
Congratulations. Good job. I also want to say something really special about Smyrna Fast Pitch. They were just one of the greatest donors in our food drive that we had. I'll get to that in just a few minutes, but they brought in just under 2,000 items, just in their Smyrna Fast Pitch team, and that's just an incredible thing. Thank you so much for doing that. It's just, it's phenomenal that those kind of numbers are being thrown around. Our second award is Most Christmas Spirit Entry 83, and it's Smyrna Church of the Nazarene. They literally put a live band on a trailer and jammed all the way down Lowry Street. So somebody here from Church of the Nazarene, come on up. Thank you, guys, so much. I don't know how you did it, and how it was amplified and all that, but it was awesome.
Of course. You have some talented people.
You have very talented people, very talented people. Thank you so much. They won our whip from-
You jammed something else.
Now, our best use of theme, our theme this year was Songs of the Season. Our best use of theme was Parks Realty, and they put out an amazing Elvis Blue Christmas. So people with Parks Realty, you have won Best Use of Theme. There you go. Congratulations. Congratulations.
I have the daily privilege of working with these ladies, and I know-
How much time and effort they put into putting that float together. There was a lot of organization. Lee was really heading all that up and got a lot done. And so I'll let Lee announce that.
Our proceeds will be fully donated to Make-A-Wish. We're very involved with them. Thank you.
Then we had a, thank you, guys, so much. Then we had the Mayor's Cup, and the Mayor's Cup, everybody put in such wonderful things, but this was something that just sort of stood out. And if you look, it stood out so much, we couldn't get it in one frame, because it was the National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation entry, and it had the huge trailer, and it had the house, and the lights, and all the bells and whistles. It was just absolutely incredible. And that was Crylike Realtors with the Griswolds Christmas that won the Mayor's Cup. So if you guys will come on up, there's a bunch of them, guys, so thank you so much, and congratulations on the Mayor's Cup. Tom, let me let you have your money and your certificate right there.
I also get the pleasure of working in the industry with this group of people here. Fine group of people, very community-oriented, and we really do appreciate their input, everything that they do. I think the Grinch is actually here. Yes, there he is, right there.
Yeah, we're going to have to come together like we like each other or something.
I want to hang, I want to hang on to you guys for just a second, if that's okay, because one of the other facets to the Christmas parade was a food drive. I've been with you guys for four years, and we started this project four years ago. And four years ago, we were just, the mayor and I were just kind of sitting around talking about something, about how you can take advantage, in a good way, of having so many people in one place at one time. What can we do good for our community with all these people in one place at one time? And it's been a blessing for me to witness so many people come together, not only for Nourish Food Bank, but as Smyrna, as a beautiful representation of Smyrna. So in 2015, when we started this, we were able to collect within all of the parade participants 1,800 items, which we thought our heads were going to spin off. It was just such a huge number to us, because we didn't think it was going to happen. We got the crowd involved the following year, and Crylike started stepping it up and putting the pedal down and telling me that they were going to come with more items than I could possibly imagine. The rest of the parade participants got on board with it, and in 2016, we upped our goal, and it was 4,523 items. Again, heads spinning off, we were cheering, it was so exciting. By 2017, we set a goal of 5,000, which we had not been able to reach yet, and we were able to reach 7,181 items. So we've made progress in this project every single year, and every single year, everybody does more and more and more. So I thought we would push it. I talked to the town manager, and we pushed our envelope, and we set a goal of 8,000 items for 2018. The mayor sent out a letter. There were competitions within town hall and the utilities. The council had food everywhere. All the parade participants were just so generous and so willing, and we exceeded our goal of 8,000 items by just a little bit, because our total was 22,000 items, 22,872. I just want to get that last two in there, because that was so important. So we so far exceeded that goal, and it just almost drives me to tears to think how amazing a community is to come together for such a thing, for the Nourish Food Bank, but just as a city of family, a community that loves each other and wants to make sure everybody's provided for. So thank you, guys, for that. Now, with that being said, we've had this little beauty going around for the last three years, and it's the person or the entry that brings in the most food items for their particular business. Crylike, this year, on their own, donated over 10,000 items, 10,792, to be exact. So when I was so excited calculating all the things, and I knew that even you guys aside, we far outreached our goal of 8,000 and hit around 12,000 things, and then here comes Crylike for the third year running with over 10,000 items. So you're standing here still because it's my pleasure to present to you the traveling trophy and to challenge everybody else to come after you guys, because coming after you guys only benefits the Nourish Food Bank and the town of Smyrna. So congratulations for the third year in a row for the food drive challenge winners. Thank you so much. These folks put on a chili drive, a chili cook-off, and they put on a silent auction, and they did all these things within their business, and it just was incredible. So I can't say thank you enough, or I wish I could say it as big as I would like to say it, but thank you so much. And to everybody who participated in this within the parade, the town of Smyrna, together, town hall and utilities brought in over 3,000 items. Like I said, Smyrna Fast Pitch brought in almost 2,000 items. It was such a pile of food coming into the parade, to sign up to the parade, we could barely get through, and that was the most amazing feeling in all the world. And I just want to say to Chief Culbertson that we do this on the heels of your project. We never would have thought, hey, what can we do with all this stuff going on and all these people going on in the parade, if it hadn't have been for your efforts to lead the community in a food drive. We're so thankful for what you do and the example that you set. It just set in motion why we do what we do, so thank you for doing that. I really appreciate it. So what an example to have from the fire department. So you guys can sit down if you want to. And finally, I just want to say thank you, because I know Vice Mayor Atkins, he said a lot about, the emails are always funny, because I send out a bazillion of them, and they're really wordy, and they just go on and on and on for about three or four months. And it's always me signing the emails, but what I really want to say is that it takes such a huge effort with a huge team of people. I may be signing the emails, and I may be writing the emails and whatever, but it should just say "from us" or "we" or something like that, because it takes an army to run this parade, and it is not me. It is "we." It is "us." It's all of you. And all of you, and fire, police, utilities, public works, I mean, you name it. There's, the list is endless, how many people it takes to go forward with this effort. So it's a lot of people, and I'm so thankful to everybody on the team, and thank you again for the opportunity, and thank you, guys, so much for coming out. I appreciate it. And you, guys, can leave the meeting, or you can stay and enjoy their amazing city council. So thank you so much.
Jill, thank you once again.
Thank you.
You know, every team needs a leader, and so to me, you're that leader. You're the one that's taken this on, and people really look to you for direction and for the support, and everything that takes place with that parade, you've got your hands on it. So we really, really, really appreciate that as well from you. Thank you so much. Yes.
I want to point out, the leader, really, of our team was Amber McCarron, who really took the reins.
Good job. And I want to say, before any of you leave, because I know most of you, and I know when you, Jill, challenged them, they will step up. They're the kind of people, they're going to, they're going to want to keep that cup. They're great people. It's a great office over there, and we're really glad to have them in our community and working in the real estate industry together with them. So thank you all.
Hey, Mark.
Yes.
Chief.
Chief, yes, please.
I'd like to thank just a second. Ms. Strange, ministry, our food drive. I need to thank the Stewart's Borough Elementary, Cedar Grove, Mr. Chris out at Walmart, and everybody that contributed and gave to our food drive. We have one gentleman, the whole department works endlessly on this food drive, but Lieutenant Burt Wilson has led us for 17 years, telling us where we need to be and where, what time we need to be there and what to collect. And I need to thank the entire department, but especially Lieutenant Wilson. This year, we were able to collect 34,000 items and deliver. So between the two, 56,000 items we took over there. But I appreciate Ms. Strange for recognizing the fire department, but it's not me. It's the members of the fire department, and we did excellent this year.
You did an excellent job. We appreciate what the fire department has done in the past, not only this time, but in the past. This has sort of been their program. It's sort of been their niche, and it's catching fire now, right?
That's right.
It's really beginning to grow, and the Nourish Food Bank's the recipient of this. So we appreciate it very much. Thank you so much. All right. Is that all our awards and recognitions that we know of?
Yes, sir.
So let's move into the consent agenda. This agenda has several items on it. I'll read them. If anybody on the council sees any item that they wish to pull off and speak about separately or differently, please let me know. So item A is the approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a revised proposal with Reagan Smith Associates, Inc., relative to CEI services for the Weekly Swan Intersection Improvements Project. Item B, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Dempsey-Dilling &amp; Associates relative to part-time CEI services for the Potomac Place Extension Project. Item C, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Morton Salt relative to annual road salt purchase. Item D, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Rosso LLC relative to the construction of the Potomac Place Extension Project. E, approval of the terms of and authorization for mayor to execute a donation agreement between the town and 333 Lowry Street, Inc., relative to the Nolan Drive Relocation Project. Item F, approval of terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with LifePoint Church relative to the practice field area. G, approval of the terms of and authorization for mayor to execute a contract with CareHere relative to onsite healthcare, health center services. H, approval of change to employee health plan to include bariatric procedures for calendar year 2019. I, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with volunteer behavioral healthcare system relative to psychological testing for police officer applicants. J, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a three-year contract with ESRI, Environmental System Research Institute relative to GIS mapping software. K, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Linko Technology relative to software package for the wastewater treatment plant. L, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract amendment with Bush Construction relative to natural gas construction. M, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with SEC, Inc., relative to a professional services for the Genie Lane Extension Study. And item N, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Jones Brothers relative to the construction of the Enin Springs West Extension. I don't think I missed any. So, counsel, do you have any questions or comments on these? If not, we'll take a motion on them.
I'll move we approve the consent agenda.
All right. We have a motion from Tim.
I second.
And Raquel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. On to item seven, our old business. We have three public hearings tonight, so I'll turn this over to Kevin to speak about, and then we'll begin the public hearing.
The first item on the public hearings is a rezoning request from Wendell Miller. That's the rezoning tax map 28 parcel 129 from R1 to C2. The property contains about 8.13 acres. It's located at 2124 Stonecrest Parkway. This property also has road frontage on Rock Springs Road. It's directly at the intersection there. Land use plan for the area would support a office-retail multifamily mix here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R3, C2, and the Sterling of Stonecrest PUD, which is a multifamily and commercial mix. There is an existing house on this parcel. The planning commission did review this request and did recommend it, as you all passed it to pass on our first reading, and there are no changes to this request since you looked at it on first reading.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing and see if there's anybody here that would like to speak for or against this. If you would, please come to the microphone. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council.
A move we approve.
So we have a motion for approval from Tim.
Second.
The second from Jerry. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our second public hearing, consideration of an ordinance enacting a code of ordinances for the town of Smyrna. This is a second reading. Who's got this one? Kevin, is that you? Counsel, sorry.
Vice Mayor and Counsel, as we've discussed on numerous occasions, the recodification process, this, we try to do at least every 10 years to keep in tune with state law and the spirit of state law, and this basically brings all the amendments back into one document that we've made over the last 10 years, as well as, we also clean it up to, for provisions that may become obsolete, or the state laws changed, or federal laws changed, whether due to court-made law or statutory law. And we have presented that to you twice now and presented it to you for passage.
All right. This is a public hearing as well, so we will go to the public to see if there's anybody that would like to come speak for or against this. If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and go to our council for a motion.
A motion that we approve. We reviewed this many times and kind of gone through it, and I think it's been needed for a while.
It's been a little time, hasn't it?
Yeah.
All right. So Steve's given us a motion. I need to- All right. So, Steve's given us a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Tim, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Item C, another public hearing, consideration of an ordinance to amend the Smyrna Municipal Code relative to the adoption of the 2018 International Codes and the National Electric Code, NEC 2017 Edition. This is a second reading. Steve, I assume you've got this one tonight.
Yes, sir, I do, Vice Mayor and Council. State law requires municipalities to update their codes periodically and it's now that period. Murfreesboro, Rutherford County and Laverne and other jurisdictions in middle Tennessee are making this move at the same ti, or about the same time. And so, we're asking that we, we move forward and adopt these codes.
All right. Thank you, Steve. So, being that this is a public hearing, I'll call the public to see if anybody wants to come up and speak for or against. Open the public hearing. And seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
A motion from Tim to approve.
Second.
Second from Steve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. To new business, our planning commission report. Kevin?
Yeah, we have one item under the planning commission report tonight. It is a request for annexation and PRD zoning of some property kind of east of the Woodmont Development, north of Lee Road. Tax Math 51, Parcels 12 and 14. It's about twenty-two acres total. The land use plan would support a medium-density residential development in this area. So, this is, the proposed development is consistent with our land use plan. The town would be providing all services here except for water, which is provided, would be provided by Consolidated Utility District. The proposed PRD is for a ninety-seven lot, single-family residential subdivision. An existing street in Woodmont, Maple Creek Drive, would, would extend into this development and provide the initial road access. The three streets would be stubbed to surrounding properties for future access. Did include the booklet that had other information regarding the layout, proposed houses and that type of thing. The planning commission did review this. There's a couple, or there are actually four conditions as part of the approval. At the meeting, there was, there's been quite a bit of discussion regarding sewer access to this property. They are working with the adjoining, this, this developer and the developer of Woodmont are working together on, on sewer for this property and utilizing an existing pump station in Woodmont, which is something the town certainly supports. That's one less pump station for the town to, to maintain long-term. And so, condition number one is regarding the sewer extension plan from that adjoining parcel would be finalized prior to the town council's second reading. At the planning commission meeting, the developer, the two developers were both there and they have agreed in principle to that. They just haven't actually put it in writing. At that time at least, they didn't, not have any writing and, and everything yet. All the I's dotted and T's crossed yet. So, but that, that would be done prior to, you all looking at this on second reading. Comment number two is to add a note in the book that all HVAC, all HVAC units will be located to the rear and that's because of the five-foot setbacks that they're proposing. Comment number three, no vinyl siding is allowed in the development. Cement siding is required on any elevation per vinyl shown in addition to brick or stone being allowed. That is, the book you have in front of you does show vinyl, but they did agree at the planning commission meeting to, to not do use vinyl and would use the cement siding. Number four was amend the book to reflect that the town does not provide solid waste service, which they did, say they would do that as well. We would expect to have revised books to you for your second reading to reflect all those things. The planning commission did recommend approval of this request with those conditions.
And so, before the second reading, we'll have some sort of written agreement between those two developers that will eliminate that pump station?
Yes.
Okay.
You said we'll eliminate the pump station?
It wouldn't, it would, it would, there wouldn't be a second, another one created, basically. They would utilize an existing pump station in Woodmont. So, it wouldn't eliminate one.
How much capacity is left on that pump station?
This one, I believe, was, there is one in, on the Lee Road entrance to Woodmont is where there is concern about capacity. This is a different one that they would be utilizing.
Is the density of these parcels consistent with the, the surrounding subdivisions?
Yes.
And so, are they, I know you said that they had agreed to make all of the recommended changes. Are they gonna, is that going to be in writing somewhere?
Yeah, the, all, well, comments two, three and four, there will be a revised book that you would have on second reading. We, that would be something separate would be the, the, something that would be submitted from the two developers that they did have an agreement. Like I said, they have, what they said at the planning commission meeting is they had agreed verbally. They just had to get both sides' attorneys agreeing and all that kind of stuff.
But we do want to make sure we get that agreement before the second reading. We want to, we want to have that written.
Right. I think, and they're aware of that.
Right.
One comment I'd like to say, I know three of you guys were probably on planning when this was approved. Did you actually vote on this or were you already off? Okay. Well, I, I did want to say I appreciate some of the things that did get put in here. Couple of the items that we've been dealing with around the town is parking. And I noticed that this has two-car garage as well as two parking spots in the driveway.
We asked for that.
Which is very nice. I really like the rear air, the AC units on the rear. That, that helps. And then, of course, the elimination of vinyl. So, I appreciate you guys on the planning actually being able to push that through. Because I think that's, that's one of the things we have been, that's some of the things we've been hearing consistently.
Well, we know our police department doesn't like to see a lot of cars out in the road as well, parked on the streets and blocking traffic and so forth. So, we're trying to do some things that can ask the developer to work with us to correct some of those issues before it ever gets done. So... Tim, did you have anything from planning side that you wanted to add?
No, just, you know, to let folks know, we heard what concerns are from the council and the community and it's something that we're committed to addressing when we, when we see a project like this.
My guess is we're going to be seeing a lot more of those changes just because we're, we've sort of learned along the way that we had to make some, some corrections.
I've just seen a lot of, there, there seems to be a lot of quality in this development. There's, the front yards will be sod, underground utilities. There's, those are things that we haven't always seen in the developments around town and I really like to see those improvements in the, in the, in these developments coming forward.
Any other questions on this? If not, we need a motion.
Yeah, I do. One more.
Yes, sir. H.G.?
It has, all of this is going to access through Maple Creek Drive, right?
Yes.
And I guess as other areas develop around there, will we find another, like the ones, I guess, south of that right there? I guess that stub this one in and take it down, possibly to Lee Road also, correct?
Yeah, there's, there's two.
Do we know anything about the owners of the other parcels nearby?
I haven't talked with any of the other parcels as far as any, any imminent requests for annexation or anything like that. They are proposing three stub streets, two east and one south to provide future access to Lee Road and eventually back over to Rocky Fork Road. As those adjoining parcels develop, obviously, that's something that's going to take time.
Okay.
I think there's only maybe one or two tracks south of this till you get to Lee Road, so...
Anything else, H.G.?
No, sir.
All right. Anybody else? All right. So, we'll take a motion?
A move we approve.
And we need a second.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion from Tim, second from Steve. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. No Package Liquor Board Report this evening. So, we, we have a public hearing. Brian, I'm going to turn this over to you real quick and...
I just want to ask Mike Strange to come up and...
Okay. We're just going to hand it down from Brian to Mike, right? Mike, do you have anybody you want to hand it down to?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll find somebody. Now, I put this handout on your all's desk. It's an information sheet about Community Development Block Grant, which we are applying for. The reason for the public hearing is that's part of the requirements to apply for this block grant. Matty Cushman and Laura Lee Hughley are here and working with us with Community Development Partners. If you have any deep dive questions, they're the experts, but I'll hit a few of the highlights here. The CDBG is federally funded by HUD and it's administered at the state level by Economic Community Development. There's primary categories that, that you can hit. Obviously, we're looking at the Water and Sewer Improvements category for the I&amp;I project. There's also housing, community livability with fire protection, EMS services, things like that. Qualifying for this must be in low to moderate income census tracts. The I&amp;I project would qualify based on that criteria. Now, there is scoring criteria that has to be met also. You know, how that shakes out depends on where you're ranked on the list. Some of the scoring criteria is community need, project need, project impact, feasibility, economic development, things like that. So, again, to, to be able to apply for the grant, we have to have this, this meeting. Anybody here with the public? These are available outside next to the agendas if you would pick one up, please. And any questions, I'll do my best answer. If not, one of these ladies can answer.
So, do we need to open this to a public hearing first?
Yes.
All right. We'll go ahead and do that. So, if there's anybody, we'll open the public hearing to see if anybody here wants to speak for or against it. Mr. Upright?
Daniel Upright, 114 Seward Street, Smyrna, Tennessee. They just had a, some sort of Community Development Block Grant in Laverne for $500,000 and it was used to rehabilitate some low-income residents, elderly, you know, to make sure their homes were heatable and safe. And I'm wondering if this is similar.
We'll let these people speak to that. I think it's a different grant, if I'm not mistaken, but maybe the same thing.
On your handout, it has a list, I'm Laura Lee Hughley. On your handout, it has a list of all of the different funding categories under the Community Development Block Grant. So, housing rehabilitation is one of those categories. You have to choose a category to apply for. You can't apply for multiples. But the housing, we typically struggle a little bit more with finding an area that is completely 100% owner-occupied housing, which is the requirement of the grant for that specific category.
Is this the same one that was done in Laverne or is this a different?
If it was a Community Development Block Grant, then yes. It is the same program. It's just a different funding category. So, the $500,000 would have been consistent with CDBG, but also there is a home program run through THDA that also, that could have been.
And just, so, we have it on the record in the tape. Would you give us your name, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Laura Lee Hughley with Community Development Partners.
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions for her before she leaves?
Excuse me, just to confirm, you're saying when we apply for the grant, we will already, we will designate the category we're applying for?
Yes.
So, if it's for the sewer and water, will, that would be the category it would go into specifically for that?
We are proposing to apply under sewer system.
I was actually assuming that since Mike was representing it, but I was going to say, ask the same question.
Thank you. Any others to speak, for or against? We'll close the public hearing and I assume you need a motion on this, correct? So, we'll look for a motion from the council.
So...
H.G. and Steve, second?
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mike, for going after grants.
Yes, we appreciate that. Sure does save us some money. All right. Next on the agenda is the approval and authorization for the mayor to execute necessary documents with the excess carriers relative to the 2019 property casualty and workers' comp excess insurance. That's got to be Kay, right?
Yes, sir. All right. Vice Mayor and Council, before you, you should have the premium quotes for the upcoming year and it's going to be eighteen months as opposed to twelve months as we have done in the past because we're now trying to get it on the cycle of the fiscal year as opposed to the calendar year.
Ah, okay.
And make it a little easier. So, you have two quotes, one with the regular serves that we have currently, self-insured retentions, and the second quote with the higher retentions in four areas. That would be general liability, law enforcement, public officials and auto liability.
I like the looks of it. It looks like our coverage goes up, but our premium goes down. Is that right?
Yes, because we're taking on more responsibility.
Getting it on a calendar cycle will probably be somewhat helpful as well, I would assume.
I'm sorry?
Getting it on the calendar cycle, the eighteen months.
On the fiscal calendar? Yes, sir.
When we look to higher retentions, are, are we being proactive on our end as far as training and, you know, friends and auto liability? And, you know, here's what we need to be doing when we're driving and things along that line to reduce our exposure.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I might add, Ms. Charles and I spoke about this and we looked at some of these things and we also looked at what our vulnerability has been in the past and, and tried to bring into play that. And then, we also talked about the effects of now adding some training for those type of things to allow us to go to that higher level. And we're not, you know, we, we've not had any exposure, knock on wood, kind of deal. You know, you, you want to make sure you're not jinxing yourself here, but that's one of the things we looked at as she and I talked about this, is where, where have we been exposed and what, to what levels? And, you know, we, we felt like the significance of the, the savings offset where we're at. And then, again, looking at stepping up our training this next year on some of these issues, we, we hope to continue to, to manage that.
What kind of training is it? Is it classroom training? Is it online training or is it both?
It, it could be a little of each. I think we're going to develop some programs. Ms. Charles, you may be more prepared to talk about that.
It will be a little bit of both. Most initially would be classroom where they're able to ask questions and do more one-on-one with employees, mainly effective employees. And that way, and then after that, we can do online, which will be like a follow-up, repeated training.
I know we've, in the past, I've used some, some companies that have the online training where you can actually, it's like a simulator type of thing and you can see some behaviors and things like that ahead of time before, say, drivers have, have accidents or something.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions for Kay? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve.
Some, a motion from Jerry, second from Tim. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E, appointment of one member to the Arts Commission Board to serve an unexpired term ending for 2019. Counsel, do you have applications distributed amongst us? Somebody did and...
I think Melissa did, but...
I haven't had that discussion with her.
So, I'm going to kind of lean towards Raquel over here because that's her board and committee that she oversees as a council person. Do you have any input on this at all for us?
Well, I, I do and I just need to find it.
Would you like these paper copies right here?
No, we, we talked about an actual person to nominate and I have it. I just need to find it. Well, I think it was the gentleman.
The names, I'll read them.
Okay.
Damian Marcel Tally, Monica McGee, Andrew Fine, Robert New. Those are the four I have.
Oh, okay. There were some additional ones that were online. And actually, I was looking at Miss Dora Baynes, B-A-Y-N-E-S.
Okay. So, do you want to make that as your recommendation?
Yes, that's my recommendation. Yes, that is my motion.
That's her motion. We have a motion. We need a second.
Second.
We have a second from Tim. Any other questions or comments on this? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, next, we're going to appoint somebody to do what I do, it looks like. So, we are to the point of appointing a vice mayor for a two-year term. Counsel, will you take that?
Sure. Obviously, this is a majority vote of the council. I'll be taking nominations for vice mayor to serve for the next two years. Do I hear any nominations for vice mayor of the, of the town council?
I nominate Mark Atkins.
Have a nomination for Mark Atkins? Any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations?
Yep.
Everybody had time? Seeing no further nominations? We will vote for acclamation of Mark for vice mayor. Mark for vice mayor. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion.
Moving on. Thank you guys. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, I will, for at least two more years. All right.
Yes. Right up and down? I mean, we have to wait till exactly six? Okay.
We've got like six minutes, so I think we're gonna get right there. We'll come back if we have to finish up. We will have to take a recess real quickly for a presentation, and then we'll come back if we need to.
We do have a couple of other items under others.
Yeah, sharply at 6 o'clock, we need to do that. So, we are at others, so who's gonna take? Kevin, you've got something you wanna address, right?
Yes, I do. We had one item that was was discussed at the workshop, and it was inadvertently left out of your packet regarding the signal at Stonecrest and Stonecrest and Rock Springs Road. We discussed this, the request of the developer to instead of requiring the signal be installed prior to a CO, the CO for the assisted living facility be allowed, and then with the anticipation that the signal would be installed within 90 days of the that CO being issued, which would be first quarter 2019. We did discuss it at the workshop. You all had asked for quite a bit of other information, which I did send to you via email. And so, all that, the agenda summary in that email is, I put it on hard copies on your desk tonight. So, regarding some of the size of the building, number of potential residents there, they're in phase one, traffic that would be generated, and that sort of thing. Mr. Chad Gilbert, with who is a part of the development team on this project, is here now. If you have any questions of him as well. So.
Steve had asked a question a while ago about the bond.
Yep. There was a couple of things that we we had brought up, and based on the information you've given, showing that pretty much the the traffic count at peak times is relatively minor, even at capacity, which it wouldn't be at capacity probably until that, after that lights up anyway. I I would hope that they could get to capacity in 90 days. That'd be great for them, but I don't think it'll happen. So, so I think the count, the road counts and the traffic gives us, gives at least me peace that that the impact is negligible. But there was a mention in the council that they were willing to put up a bond to guarantee the installation of that at a red light, and I didn't see that mentioned in here at all.
We can work with them after. We we wanted to make sure you guys were comfortable with where we were at. They have offered that, and we can we can implement that through through Kevin and his department to maintain that.
You're comfortable with that?
Yeah, with with the bond, I think.
It will be taken care of.
Yeah, we can do a bond for, as part of the CO process, before we give them the CO, have the bond to cover the cost of that signal. We can certainly do that. And then, once it's installed, we can give them the money back.
Yeah, I just remind you again, I mean, you know, these folks are making efforts. They've gotten caught in a trap that several of us in the road building and road construction business have been in with these mast arms. You know, we feel very comfortable from the town's perspective. They've they've done everything we've asked them to do. They continued the construction, the electrical installation. The bases are up, so basically, when the mast arms are in within that first quarter, we we feel comfortable that the the signal will be up. But they are willing to place the bond, and we're willing to work with them on that if if it's the wish of the council.
I hate to call it a silver lining, because it's a senior development, but it's kinda nice to see some of those seniors be able to go ahead and get in and occupy. I know families have to really work through a lot of things to get somebody in a place like that. Takes a lot of time and effort from the family's point of view, so I'm glad to know that those families won't have to not be able to put that roof over their heads and go in and take occupancy. That's a good thing, so.
Kevin, you said Mr. Gilbert is here.
Yes.
Can we just have him? I I know we had a lot of discussion, and and I know we've kinda summarized a little bit, but I'd just kinda like to hear a little bit about the efforts that have been made and projections and and things like that.
And, Mr. Gilbert, we've got about a minute before we have to recess, so if you would, just real quick, give us a fast rundown on that, and that'd be great.
Listen, we're willing to do the bond. The inner developer in me probably wants to just speak, just as a, just to balance the scale a little bit. I mean, the spirit of a bond is typically, hey, there's fear that they're not going to, we're not gonna have leverage if we do this. I my initial call to Kevin was, you know, hey, the apartments, the multifamily is what's gonna put the the real load on the road, and we're we're willing to, I mean, you have all the leverage in the world when it comes to that. Another bond premium, you know, that just passes down the line to the tenants that we want to house and you want us to house, whether it be seniors or multifamily folks. And I would understand it more if you didn't have any leverage on us, but you have an abundance of leverage with the rest of the development. And I just, you know, again, the developer in me wants to appeal to your senses of why add cost if if you still have an abundance of leverage? I might even tongue-in-cheek offer to, if we come up with a bond premium, I'll split that with you and and give it to your food drive instead, and then we all make money.
We do appreciate what your efforts are over there, and we love having another senior living center in our community, so thank you very much for that.
All right.
All right, really quick, we have a presentation, won't take long, but we do have to recess our we do have to recess our council meeting just for a few minutes, and so we will call this meeting at recess, and we'll have our 6 o'clock, come up here and do their presentation, if you would please. And then we will reconvene once they're finished and finish the council meeting.
Thanks, sir. I'll start off as part of the state revolving fund loan program to be awarded funding. Again, you have to go through certain guidelines and meet certain guidelines. That's why Jerome Dempsey, the engineer of the project, is here.
He moved on you.
Yeah. And Ms. Emily Kelly's here also, who's done a lot of work with SRF. They've both done a fantastic job for us, but I'll I'll turn it over to Jerome and let him let him hit the particulars. Am I missing anything, Emily?
We have to, everybody needs to sign in for the public meeting.
Okay. We'll have a sign-in sheet that if, please, if everybody would sign into that, that would help us out. Thank you.
Vice Mayor and Council.
Hello, Jerome.
Hey, how are you? Good. I guess my job tonight is to kinda go over the project, to go through the guidelines of the state revolving loan program. Basically, the project's gonna consist of, we've got a diagram there of expanding the wastewater treatment plant from 5.85 million gallons a day to 9 million gallons a day. That's gonna be a 54% increase. The expansion will incorporate an advanced biological nutrient removal process. This process will be a five-stage Bardenpho system and which consists of an aerobic, first anoxic, aerobic, second anoxic, and re-aeration process. Currently, the plant has a three-stage process, which is extended aeration, activate sludge process. So, this process is gonna be so much more advanced in keeping the nutrients out of the creek and and cleaner water going to the creek. The design flows for the project will be 9 million gallons per day, average daily flow, 16 million gallons per day for the peak daily flow, and then 21 million gallons a day for peak hourly. So, at any one time, if we have a surge of rainfall events and I and I enter the system, they'll be capable of handling 21 million gallons a day during that during that one-hour period. The components, what we have crosshatched are where we're doing expansions. This is a headworks. We're redoing the headworks. There's been a lot of discussion on that. Redoing the headworks, putting in three new screens, putting in three more pumps in the raw water intake, replacing those from 90 horsepower pumps to 140 horsepower pumps at this raw water pump station. We'll be constructing an aerobic basin, which is this new basin right here with flow splitter boxes that will direct the flow to each of these existing oxidation basins. There are six of them right there, and we're retrofitting each aeration basin or oxidation basin that will give you that five-stage process. We're also building a much larger oxidation basin. This will be able to handle 3 million gallons per day. These six, each one of them will be able to handle 1 million gallons per day. So, total of all these is 9 million. We are planning for the future to go to 12 million for an expansion. Just so you'll know, we're arranging all the internal piping and everything to go to the next phase as the city grows to a 12-million expansion without a lot of internal excavation. The, we're adding two more clarifiers here. These are 80-foot diameter clarifiers. You have six existing clarifiers here, and we'll be retrofitting those slightly, adding two more 80-foot diameter, and planning for two more in the future. This is a flow splitter box. We'll also be redoing the the UV system, which is here, and adding filters, tertiary filters. The plant doesn't have filters on the back end right now, and if you guys recall, there were some issues with irrigation at the golf course previously. This will help tremendously with with taking out any fines out of the out of the effluent. We're adding a rotary drum thickener at the digester building, and we're also adding a decanner at the digester, allowing you to be able to drain the liquid from the top of the digesters. The solids handling facility is right here. You currently have two belt presses in there. We're going with a much more advanced called centrifuge that basically spins and swings water out of the solids. It'll give you a much drier solid, which will reduce on your hauling cost to the landfill or to the farm. New instrumentation and upgrades to the SCADA system. So, basically, in a nutshell, that's a quick presentation of the expansion. There's some other items I need to go over to meet the requirements of state revolving loan. One is project cost. Total estimated cost for this project is in the neighborhood of $31 million. State revolving loan, fund loan will be in the amount of 3 million with $300,000 principal forgiveness on that loan. So, that's $300,000 that the town will be getting for free through this loan program through the state. The remainder of the project, the difference of the 3 million and the total project cost, will be funded by the town. As part of this process, the user fees, sewer user fees, had to be reviewed by the state, TDEC. After review of those fees, it was determined that the current rate structure would support this expansion and this project cost. The project schedule, it'll take about 36 months to complete this project, and that's due in part with the demand of labor, the demand of materials. I heard y'all just discussing the mast arms for the signals. You know, there's a high demand for materials and labor, especially in middle Tennessee area. So, it'll be a 36-month project. We anticipate this bidding in the spring of 2019, awarding summer of 2019, and then completing 36 months later, summer of 2022. Project impacts, the short-term impact will only be at the wastewater treatment plant and the operators. You'll have construction going on on-site. There'll there'll not be an interruption of the process, because what we wanna do is, we wanna build this structure, this oxidation basin, the two clarifiers, before we start taking one of these offline and retrofitting it. So, you'll always have the capacity after this is built to start to go shut these basins down and start retrofitting. So, we feel good about the process of construction. There'll be no interruption to sewer service or treatment capabilities, and the long-term benefits will be the, you'll have the treatment capacity to allow the town to continue to grow. This this will serve the town for 20 years, depending on if growth slows down or speeds up. That could vary. And basically, that is what I'm required to discuss with you guys, open it up for questions if anyone has any questions.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
So, on your expansion tanks, the oxidation tanks, where you said we could grow from 9 million to 12 million?
Yes.
And you also said it's a 36-month project. So, do you have a feel for when we would need to go from 9 to 12?
You're 20 years out.
Okay.
But, you know, if your growth keeps doing that, it could, you know, be 15 years, you know?
Can I tag on to his question and ask what are, how we're falling within our discharge limits?
How are we falling?
Discharge limits.
The discharge limits on this will actually be lower, because what the state wants you to do, you have X number of pounds of nutrients that you're allowed to go to Rutherford Creek right now, okay? When you increase that flow from 9 to 12 million, you have to proportionally decrease your concentrations so that you don't add any more poundage than what you're adding right now.
What about the overall limits with the with the core?
The the core, you know, basically, what the core was concerned with is, are we impacting any waters of the US? And we're not impacting any. So, we're basically going through TDEC and their review process to, okay, we already have draft permit limits for this expansion. And so, that draft permit will go into effect, those limits, as soon as we tell them we're complete with construction. So, we've got all the paperwork performed through TDEC so that when this thing comes online, they'll re, they'll permanently issue that draft permit that we have in hand right now.
Go ahead, Steve.
And
Yeah, so, yeah, sorry. The only other question I had is, and I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember what you called, the two tanks on the bottom down there, the expansion tanks there?
Right here.
Yeah, well, the new ones, the the newer ones, the future ones.
Right here?
Yeah.
Clarifiers.
So, are those two tied to the tank above? You'll do it all at the same time?
This would be the expansion, the 12-million expansion.
Right.
This is the 9 million. These, everything in crosshatch is the 9 million.
So, we wouldn't get to a point where we would do part of it and not do the other part? We would do it all at the same time?
Right.
Okay.
You'd do this tank, this tank, and that at the same time, you expand it from 9 to 12.
Understood. Okay.
And environmentally, this this process, we've implemented in Spring Hill, and we basically, we've sampled upstream and downstream, and the water is better going into the creek than what's in the creek right now. And they delist, delisted the stream in Spring Hill based on this process. It used to be an endangered stream, and they've delisted it since we implemented this plan about five years ago.
Really filters and cleans it up.
Yeah, it's a good good process.
The headwalls, we traditionally have trouble with our headwalls, and you mentioned a change to them. Can you describe what you're talking about there?
Trouble with what?
The headwalls.
Head headwalls? Oh, the headworks, yes. Right now, we have two screens that they have a half-inch opening, the screens. They're a traveling screen. The water will go through it, and it captures miscellaneous stuff, okay, that goes into the screen. It captures that. The new screens we're putting in are a quarter-inch screen, which is a much finer screen, and will capture more of that material before it goes through the pump station and into the biological process. So, improvements to that will help improve odors. Will it cure the odor situation? No, it's a wastewater plant, you know? But will it improve it? Yes.
At one point, we talked about using gas-fired dryers instead of the centrifugal thing.
Yeah, the, we we did a whole study on that, whole analysis, solids handling analysis, and the capital upfront cost for that, you just cannot get the payback that you need. It needs to be on a much broader scale rather than, you know, 50,000 people. It needs to be, you know, a larger city and a larger.
Getting into the more mechanical end of it and upkeep and repairs and Even after getting into the more mechanical end of it and upkeep and repairs and electrical costs and everything, it's still.
Just, just not, just not feasible on a payback standpoint.
Any other questions for Jerome? All right, Mike?
One more thing.
Thank you, Jerome.
Ms. Emily asked me to announce, this loan would be a 30-year loan, and we anticipate the interest rate to be less than 2%.
Anything else? All right, so I guess now we'll call the council meeting back to order and reconvene. And we were at a place at other, I don't know if we finished all the other.
Well, we need to go back to the last item, and we need to get your approval. We do need a vote.
On Kevin's?
Yeah, the Rock Springs Amendment of the PRD.
All right, and we did ask the questions about the bond and got all that settled. So we do need a motion on that.
We did, I had a, excuse me, I had a comment that I wanted to make prior to, we ran out of time.
Okay, sure.
One of the things that the gentleman, the gentleman had said was that we kind of have them over a barrel. And it's not that, in my opinion, I don't think that we're trying to make this more difficult for them, but we are concerned for what our citizens are concerned for. And this project was something that a lot of citizens came out and had some concerns with. And now we're, we're not at a point where they are, they have the entire project done, but, and we, they can't put up the signal because of the issue with the masked arms. But they are asking to be able to have the occupancy for the Sterling, which is where the seniors are going to live. And so for us to do that, I think it's important that the citizens know that we still have their concerns at heart. And we're not just dropping the bar to say, okay, go and do whatever you feel is best as a developer. We still want them to know that their concerns are our concerns. And so to put this bond in place, I think it's important from that perspective. Because it, I think it's, there's two sides to this. Because this is not the area that we'll be dealing with the most traffic regarding the apartments. That, that's not what is being asked of us at this point. It is the assisted living side. And that is a concern for us as a council is to make sure that we are providing that type of living for our seniors in the community. And so we want to give, give you all the opportunity to be able to begin to move residents in on that end. However, we also want the citizens to know that we still are concerned with what happens as a part of this development. So I think the bond is a necessary move by us as a, as a council and as a town. And I just wanted to bring that up and say, it's not that we are trying to put them over a barrel even more, but we do need to take our citizens' concerns to heart and make sure that we let them know that we are still concerned for what their issues are.
All very good points and very valid. And I think that's the reason, she just explained it very well. I think that's the reason we want, we wanted the bond in place, just for the assurity of our citizens as much as anything. So thank you, Raquel, good comments. Any others? Okay, we need to go ahead and take action on this, so do I have a motion on it?
Although we approve.
Have a motion for approval, need a second?
A second.
A second from HG. Any other?
Sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to? What about the bond? You're gonna take care of that separately?
The bond will be part of the, if you approve this, the bond will be in place before we'll issue a CO.
Okay, I just want to make sure we didn't need to put in our motion, is all I was getting at.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's part of.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? That carries. Any other other?
Uh, yes, we do have one other item. Mike, do you have a merge? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's under announcements, I always get that wrong. No more other.
Okay. Status reports? Anybody? Okay, so now we will do announcements.
Announcements.
Sorry. Oh, you're good. I need to announce an emergency purchase. We had to replace a water line on Mingle Lane. The water line was a two-inch water line, ductile iron, had been in the ground for over 50 years. And we started having some issues. We received a call on the water line and started having some issues and started investigating, did additional flushing, did not help the situation, so we ended up replacing the entire line. We put an eight-inch water line back in its spot. That would be, B&amp;B Excavating was the contractor who installed that, and the cost was $89,567.51.
50-year-old pipes lasted a while, hasn't it?
Yes, it has.
Hopefully, we're both gonna ask that one.
Let's hope.
Where did you say that was located?
Mingle Lane.
Okay.
Is that not a big pipe for, how, how, how much area does that surface?
Well, it didn't have fire protection, as, as Chief can probably attest to. They had to bring the fire hose from a different direction if there was a fire there, so we have also put a fire hydrant at the end of this line.
Okay, any questions for Mike, comments? I assume you need us to give you a motion, don't you, Mike?
No.
No.
No, okay. All right.
Thanks for taking care of us, Mike.
That was just an announcement that you want to spend 89,000, or that you did, right? Okay, any other announcements? Ms. Diane, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes, I do have a couple of things. Appreciate the chief pointing out, I had it on my list tonight, talk about the food drive. And again, I'm very impressed with 56,000 items over about a 45-day period for our community that the town was the driver of. And I, I just appreciate, again, the fire department and the parade and utilities and the public works department working on that force.
I'd like to know who ginned up all the competition to get all of us buying in and all that. Where'd all that start from?
Not sure. I think the mayor.
You think?
I don't think she's here.
She wasn't here, so I was kind of picking on her. I thought she might throw her under the bus a little bit, but that's.
Well, I, I'm, you know, I, I will tell you, I'm calling her out for next year for a one-on-one matchup.
That's what I was looking for.
The seven-to-one matchup didn't work out to my favor. But that's okay, mayor, I know you're watching, but next year it's me and you.
So Mr. Hercules agreed to match what the council did, correct?
No, I agreed to match.
Oh, you agreed to do what the departments did?
With the employees, up to the first 250, and then I got called out by utilities for an additional 250, so, yeah, I.
Everybody knew they had you.
They had me, but I was happy to do so. What a great opportunity to serve this community. Uh, I do want to, just very quickly, we remember last, our last meeting, we had recently lost one of our employees after 36 years, Aubrey Blanks. And I do have a real quick note from his wife just thanking us for the beautiful plant, and it was probably the only one that she won't overwater. It was an orchid that the mayor picked out. "You'll never know how much all your kindness and respect meant to us. The possession was much more than we expected, and Aubrey would have been so proud." And I just want to say thank you to the utilities groups and the, all the different employees that came out. We did have several of our trucks, which we think would made him very proud to be in the funeral possession, and appreciate the employees taking care of that. Also, moving on, December 16th at the Town Center is our Sunday brunch. It will be from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The cost is $21.95 for adults, and that's all-inclusive. I made a blank on the children, but there are some different levels.
It's $13.95.
$13.95 for, for children. It's a great opportunity to come out and really enjoy a really, really good meal. Our, our chef really shows out during these brunches. So if you haven't been out, December 16th, please come. You can call, make a reservation at the Town Center, and we do accept people just coming in as well. You may have to wait a little bit if you just walk in, but if you have a reservation, we'll take care of you. I just want to mention last Friday, you know, being your new town manager, how'd you like that, the way I worked that in, HG, for you?
Good job, sir.
You're still using the new word.
Well, that's what HG calls me, the new town manager.
Hey, I'm glad you're not the former.
I'm gonna leave it at that. As, as your new town manager, it was the first experience I had with the, the employee luncheon, holiday luncheon. It was very impressive, it was great to be around our, our employees. But a, a number that I wanted to share with the community, during this luncheon, we do our service awards. And we recognize people in five-year increments, starting at five-year anniversary up. And this year, we had from five-year to actually a 40-year recipient. When we take all of those service awards this year and put them together, in that room, we awarded 890 years of experience. I think that's incredible. And I just want to say thank you to our employees, the dedication of our employees, whether they got a five-year award all the way up to the 40-year award. Also in the audience tonight, I'm gonna pick on Chief Arnold. Today at 2 o'clock, I had the pleasure of being down at the police department for an announcement. The Chamber of Commerce, through the Leadership Rutherford, offers an award each year at the annual event that you've all been invited to in January, but it's the Pinnacle Award that's given to an outstanding alumni of the Leadership Rutherford. And Chief Arnold is this year's recipient. And he was, and he was allowed to have Stephanie Brackman come today and bestow that award upon him. He'll get the formal award in January at the luncheon. But chief, we're very proud of you and the work you've done, and appreciate you so much. Also, we, over the last couple of weeks, we've been meeting with our legislative delegation. Just want to say thank you to the council for coming out and supporting that. We've gotten great reviews back from our legislators. They really appreciate us taking time to sit down with them, sharing a meal and getting to know each other, and feel very confident going into this legislative agenda, starting in January, that we've got some friends in Nashville and we'll be able to, you know, share with them any concerns we have as well as hopefully they'll bring things to us and let us know what's going on. This Thursday, from 11:00 to 1:00 at Toots, we'll have our tip-a-cop. So if you're looking for a place to eat and something fun to do, come out and join us at Toots for the tip-a-cop and have a nice lunch, and also help raise some money to buy some much-needed Christmas joy for some children in our community that are less fortunate.
Will chief be waiting tables?
No, sir.
No, okay.
I heard he was washing dishes.
Wanted to clarify, I thought all Pinnacle Award winners, you know, I thought all Pinnacle Award winners served.
Also, you see on your.
All but one.
The screen, our 2019 SOAC New Year's Eve bash for the kids. Remind everybody that from 6:00, 6:00 PM to 1:00 AM for $10 per child ages six to 13, you can bring your children down to the SOAC, drop them off. There's gonna be pizzas, snacks, and all kinds of fun games and different things going on. So if you're an adult looking for a place to go and have some fun, but you have some children you want to make sure they're taken care of, this is a great way to do it. The last announcement I have, just for the council and, and for the public to know, this past Saturday was our first work in the field on Saturdays by our codes department, and it was, it was quite a day. I've shared some information with you on some of the codes violations that we did recognize over the weekend, and we're working through those. But I, I just want to say I appreciate our codes folks for stepping up and, and working their schedules. Steve Smith's in the audience, and Steve heads that department. And it's important that we know that, you know, the codes, while typically are an eight-to-five Monday through Friday position, they did say they were willing to work their schedule to come in and work on Saturday. And as you all know, codes enforcement is a 24/7 job. So I appreciate the work that was done. And just to let the community know, we will be working Saturdays intermittently going forward.
Good idea, thank you for that. Any others?
That's all I've got.
Hey, you know, speaking of, you brought up Aubrey and the, the nice note from his family. And I know some of us will or have already been to see the Colette family. That's another past employee, another former employee of ours that just recently passed away. So I know we will all want to speak to that and give our condolences. Those of us that knew them well, Ms. Linda was a sweetheart. She worked here for 24 years. And there wasn't too many people in Smyrna that didn't deal with her in some capacity when they paid a utility bill or needed some service. And she always did that with a kind heart and a smile. So to the Colette family, you know, Paul and Johnny and Carol and Donna, the brothers and sisters, they lost their father many years ago. So we just want to lift them up at Christmas time here and think of their family and prayers and condolences to them. So I wanted to recognize Ms. Colette, I know HG, Tim, Raquel, everybody up here probably knows them very well, and she's gonna be missed, so.
And one other thing, I'm sorry, I missed my note. Today, I had the pleasure of going to Brown's Chapel School for the Great American Shake Competition, their final six. And we took them down to the final three that will now go to the county and represent Brown's Chapel. Man, what a tough competition when you get down to that level with fifth graders and there's six very qualified people. I was a very unique experience, a lot of fun. I was there with some fellow Rotarians and include one of our police officers, Mr. Beverly, to help work through that process, and we just had a great time. And Brown's Chapel is a great school in our community that does a lot with us. They've been very proactive with the Koose Memorial to build educational modules for us and those kind of things. So Dr. Goose Tree out there, I just appreciate her and, and the work that she's doing at Brown's Chapel.
Brown, we keep you pretty busy, don't we?
Try to stay busy.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. Peach?
I do want to mention Katie and I are very proud. One of our girls, Hallie, is graduating from MTSU on the 14th.
Is that lightening your wallet load a little bit, maybe?
Yes, yes, yes.
Congratulations to her.
She's worked hard, she's got, she's, didn't spend a whole lot of time there, so she's.
Is she gonna be an attorney, or do we know what she's chasing, her dream?
Well, not yet, not yet, but she, she, she likes law enforcement, so we'll see where that takes her.
Good deal.
She didn't learn anything from, from what I did, so.
Pathway to the attorney's office.
That's right.
Raquel, do you have anything tonight?
I have a couple of things. First, as you've already mentioned, I'd like to extend my condolences to the Colette family. And I'd also like to say congratulations to Chief Arnold on this year's Pinnacle Award. And I'd also like to just mention that on last Thursday, that Brian and Ladonna Parham actually went on Rutherford Issues on WGNS radio to discuss the parade and the donations that were given. And so I think that that was a good show, if you have time to go back and listen to it.
Also, Councilwoman Peoples was with us, so you're being kind.
You two did, did most of the, the talking and supporting and championing Smyrna and, and the citizens of Smyrna for all that they donated, so.
I bet you look good on the radio.
Probably better than the first.
I'm not sure if that was a compliment or not.
Raquel, were you finished?
Actually, I wasn't, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I also want to mention the Christmas at the Depot that was this past Saturday. The weather did not cooperate all that well, but I think there was still a really good turnout. So thanks to Fire Department, Police Department, the Parks Department, and also Carpe Artista that had the, they had the vendors in, in the Carpe Artista 101 building. And there were also vendors at the Smyrna Assembly Hall, and I think that was a good time had by all. And let's see, actually, I want to take a moment actually to thank the citizens who actually came to. We had a benefit Christmas party at my office, the attorneys at the Victory House on yesterday, and we were able to raise $12,420 on behalf of CASA, Rutherford County. And what CASA does is it supports, it has volunteers that actually support kids that are in foster care. And so with those funds, CASA will now be able to buy Christmas gifts for the children that they are supporting and mentoring in the CASA program.
And what was the amount again? I didn't, I didn't hear. How much did they raise?
We raised $12,420 in cash. And we also had citizens to bring out toys. So in addition to the money, there were toys that were brought to be able to give out to the different children. So thank everyone who did participate in that, we really appreciate it. And again, it just shows just how, how supportive and just how giving the Smyrna community is. So I want to thank you all for that. And lastly, I'd like to tell everyone Merry Christmas, be safe. And to ask you to remember the reason for the season, I know there's a lot of shopping, a lot of gift-giving, but also remember that this is a time for family, to remember those that we've lost and to cherish those that are still here. So Merry Christmas to everyone and to the town employees. Thank you all for all you do.
Thank you, Raquel. And by the way, the food there last night was really, really good. Steve and I and Brian, and I know some of you came after we did, but great, great presentation, great food and good, good fellowship.
Thank you.
So thank you guys for putting that on. Let Jerry go and mix it up a little bit. Jerry?
Okay, basically what I had was pretty much the same thing, Raquel has already mentioned. But chief, again, congratulations, we appreciate everything you do. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, well deserved. Um, and also the Front Street Christmas, Patty and I had a great time there. Uh, weather didn't cooperate, but, uh, it didn't, uh, didn't dampen the spirits and we really had a good time. So thanks to those that, uh, were out there working and, uh, making sure that happened. Jeff, I also have a son that's graduating, uh, Saturday as well, Trenton, and, uh, from MTSU in his Mass Communications degree. So Patty and I are pretty, pretty excited, that gets them all out now. And, um, now we just gotta get them to working, so, but, uh-
You can save me a parking space, I appreciate it.
Yeah, so, but anyway, uh, we're, we're really proud of him, a- as we are all the kids. And so congratulations to him.
I don't think that was a commitment for the parking space.
And, uh, as Raquel said, uh, I do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and, uh, please be safe and, and enjoy the holidays, so, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. All right, HG, we'll come back to you now.
You don't want to keep mixing it up down there?
Yeah, mixing it back up to you.
All right, I'm pretty mixed up now. I, I also want to express my condolences to the Colette family. Grew up with the, the children and, uh, broke bread at their house many times and Ms. Linda was always a wonderful person. And then later on, as I got to know her through the city, I found out that she's one of those, um, employees who was kind of looked at as a mainstay around our, our, our town hall up here. People would look to her for, for leadership and guidance. And she was just a, a, always a wonderful lady who always, uh, uh, had a kind word to say about everybody. She reminds me of Diane.
Well, thank you, but it's a compliment.
That was definitely a compliment. Um, this is the time of the season where we want to talk about shopping local. Buy first with your local independent businesses. Most of the money stays in town when you shop through those people. As you branch out, go to Smyrna, keep the tax base here, go to the county, keep the da- tax base here. I hesitate to tell you to stay away from Amazon because none of the money comes back here. But that's the way it works. Um, Merry Christmas to all, thank you.
Thank you, HG, anything else?
Uh, no, sir.
All right, Steve?
All right, I, I'm not gonna go back down the list. I think most of us have had a lot of events, uh, for, since Thanksgiving and we still have quite a few more. So, um, this is one of my favorite times of the year. I don't spend much time at home until, uh, right before Christmas. And then, uh, pretty much luckily, my family's all local, so we stay at home quite a bit during the Christmas days, the days off, so it's really nice. Um, Chief, congratulations, Pinnacle, Pinnacle Award is, uh, a very fitting name for a man like you, so I appreciate that. And, you know, we've, uh, we've been very fortunate with the leadership that you've given us and, uh, appreciate what you're doing. Other than that, I just want to continue to wish everyone Merry Christmas. I think this is our last council meeting before Christmas. Have a great Christmas, uh, to echo Raquel's words, uh, remember what, why we're celebrating Christmas. Uh, spend time with your family, uh, attend a church of your choice and, uh, we'll see you next year.
Thanks, Steve. Tim?
Ready for me.
I'm ready for you.
All right. Again, condolences to the Colette family. John and I grew up together and, um, I know how important his mom was to the family and, and of course to our community and, and here at, uh, Smyrna. Uh, Chief, congratulations. I mean, you know, to tell you how proud I am wouldn't be enough. Our leadership team, you guys continue to amaze me what, not only with what you do here, but what you do in the community, as well as our employees, not only what they do within the town, but what they do for the community. I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy two thousand nineteen. It is one of my, you know, beginning at Thanksgiving, uh, this is one of my favorite times of year because it's, uh, it's all about family. And we all take time from our, our busy lives to let everybody know in our family how much we love them and cherish them and, you know, how important our friends are. So again, uh, from Donna and myself, Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you. Well, uh, everything's been said probably that, uh, uh, regarding the Colette family, Chief, regarding you, congratulations as well from me, we appreciate that. Just, this is kind of, kind of weird, but Jerome's in the room and Jerome, I don't get to see you as often, but I want to tell you thank you, not for what you brought up here and presented, but what you do in our community, sir, you do a lot. And, uh, we, we really do appreciate that. And I'll leave it at that. I know you don't want any accolades, but thank you for doing that. Uh, Chief Bill, I don't know if you can give us any update on Braxton Harrell? Do you know anymore at all?
No, sir, at this time of day.
Okay, we want to continue to keep the Harrell family in our prayers. Braxton, their young son, is still battling some, uh, health issues and we want to keep them lifted up. Thank you, Brian, for doing the legislative breakfast, breakfast organization. I think that we all appreciate that, knowing that we're working with some of our legislative, uh, family out there from all different, all different parts of the county. Uh, we had the county mayor here, we had some people, some state representatives and senators that came to this breakfast. And I think teamwork is, uh, definitely the way we all need to come together to, to make the county prosper. And I've heard the mayor say that many times. We, if, if something happens in, in Murfreesboro, we're glad for them. If something happens well here, Murfreesboro's glad for us because it's Rutherford County and we're all a partner in this. So, uh, we all have to work together with roads and utilities and things like that when we get into those areas that butt up against each other. Some of those things are probably coming before we know it. Some other things that are on, uh, future agendas, we'll have to work with neighboring municipalities in, in good spirit. So, uh, keep that in mind. You know, the other thing I'd like to say is thank, I'm thankful and I, I want to say this to all of our servicemen and women here, locally, across the pond, anywhere they are. And not just them, but their families. This is the time of year that a lot of sacrifice is made by those people. And we need to remember them. They're protecting our rights, protecting our country, protecting our freedoms. And their families struggle a lot during this time of year when they're not together. So they're missed and I just want to remember them and not, not forget those people. Keep those, keep those people in your prayers. It is, uh, Christmas and to me, there is obviously a greater reason for this, uh, season than gift-giving and shopping. I know, uh, we do want them to stay local when they do, right? HG, we want them to stay here and shop. But, uh, there is a larger reason with that. I attend Life Point Church. There's a Life Point Church program that the public is invited to. If you want to see a Christmas program, uh, December fourteenth on Friday night, seven o'clock. And then Saturday, there's a couple of services as well. Public's invited, so this is all about Christmas and we just want to make sure you know that. With that, I don't think I have anything else, if there's any others. Guess what, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all for being here.